Good evening, I'd like to call our Tuesday, June 30th, 2017 meeting to order. Start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasure Horning? Absent. Clerk Chopewu? Here. Trustee Colaini?
Here.
Trustee Germaine?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Absent.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved. Support.
Motion by trustee Colaini, second by trustee Harper. Any discussion? Be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number five, call to the public this evening. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Good. Stay right here.
That'd be fine.
I just wanted to take my, take a minute to introduce myself. I've met some of you. Mr. Wickman and I have talked several times. I'm the new undersheriff at the sheriff's office for Livingston County. New, I started in January, so five months, five months into it, but I just wanted to introduce myself, see a name to a face. I know how important townships are and township government is to our county, and I look forward to working with all of you. This is just a great community and a great area. I will be over here sometime and hopefully before June of next year. Don't know where I am, we're trying to figure that out. I'm relocating my family, but I just, I can't tell you all the great things I've heard about Heartland and how impressed I am, and just look forward to having a great working relationship with all of you. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
I do have one question for those at home that don't know your name. That would be one-
Did I not say my name?
I don't think so, but I might be wrong.
My name is Jeff Warder, sorry about that.
That's okay. Jeff, we would love you, for you to come to our community, and I think you would enjoy all the things that we have to offer. I don't know if your kids are grown or not, but we do have a wonderful school system here, if they're still at that age, and we're, we're pleased to have you here, and thanks for coming and sharing your, your welcoming speech to us here in Heartland.
Well, I appreciate that. So, and I have, like I said, heard great things about Heartland, and I've been very impressed with the school, school district and everything you have to offer here. We, we have a sophomore, our son will be a sophomore when we come over here, so that's, that's the one logistical thing, we're just trying to find a place that works for him. You know, if it was just my wife and I, it'd be an easy choice, but, you know, with him, we're just trying to work out logistics and everything else, but again, I love this community here.
Thank you. And where did you come in from?
Grand Ledge.
Grand Ledge, okay.
Go Comets. Even though, even though the colors are blue and gold, it's still a good school system, so.
Well, you're coming to a community with blue and gold at the, I'm a Spartan, but I-
Nah. We'll have to root together then.
Yeah, so. We, we're pretty about 50/50, of course, we have one Notre Dame guy here.
Ah, baby.
Nobody's perfect. I understand.
Well, thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you. It's okay, I'd like to give my business cards to Mr. Wickman, and he can pass them down to you. Please call anytime. Obviously, you guys know what, how much the sheriff cares about the county and everything. He truly, of course, being a, being a Heartland resident, he, he's pretty special over here, but if you ever need anything, I'm here.
Super.
All right, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
First off, aye.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved. Support.
So, motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number seven is pending new, and new business. Item A is a resolution, 2017 property exemption guidelines and policy amendments. Manager Wickman, this is for board of review, correct?
Yes, that's right. This is a resolution that upon further looking, our existing policy had contemplated adopting the federal poverty guidelines that change every year by reference. Further clarification from the state is we actually need to adopt that resolution every year, so we haven't been doing this, but we will now do going forward. There are a couple of policy changes that are also in there that memorializes our current practices. I don't think there's really much substantial to that. Happy to answer any questions. I offer this resolution for you.
And for the board's consideration, we do our poverty exemptions in the summer board of review, and we usually have less than five. It's, but these guidelines are something that we follow, and they're offered to the, by the state of Michigan as a guideline for us to follow.
Well, moved to approve the resolution adopting the 2017 poverty exemption guidelines and policy amendments.
Support.
Motion by trustee Colaini, second by trustee Harper. Is any, any discussion from the board?
Is this something we can extend to certain other areas, like, you know, like the sewer district around the lake? Is this something we, it would apply to that as well?
Yeah, we, I'd mentioned this when we considered deferments, that I would recommend using these types of guidelines. The, I think the challenging part is that these, the guidelines are pretty low, that most likely you would not have people that qualify under that for a deferment with that guideline in place.
Yeah, I, I still think we need to look at that for the challenges of our fixed, folks who are fixed incomes, who do live on the lake and are facing the new sewer system that, you know, that they've had those assessments. If there's something we could do to kind of explore that, I know I talked to Brian John Keir about that a little bit more, so it's just something that, I think we brought up a couple of times before.
We could add that to our list, active issues list.
And maybe come up with a, I mean, it's, it's really more of a deferment, it's not necessarily, you know, an exemption like, like this, actually, so.
Okay, we had a motion and support. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question for James. For the benefit of those watching now or in the future, can you, we've had this policy before, is my understanding, but why are we now doing it on an annual basis?
That is, again, we had adopted a policy, we generally prefer to have policies that just point out something else's reference, and then as it changes, it's incorporated into the policy. That works for the most part. In this case, the guidance from the state says, no, you got to adopt a resolution every year when that federal poverty guideline changes, so where this would be a catch-up, and then every year going forward, you'll have this resolution in front of you.
If there are no other questions or comments, have the clerk please call the roll?
It's a resolution. Oh, yeah, you're right, we're on roll call. Sorry.
It's okay.
I thought you got to go. All in favor.
It's been a long week, so.
I know.
Maybe I was.
It's only Tuesday.
It's only Tuesday, yeah.
Have the clerk please call the roll.
Clerk Chopewu? Yes. Treasure Horning? Absent. Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci? Absent. Trustee Colaini?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven B is turn into extension for removal of building materials. Manager Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As you will recall, the, the property received a year, last year, when we closed out that application and the escrow funds. We gave them a year to find a resolution to the, the soil and getting vegetation down, planting some screening trees, securing the driveway, as well as burying the, the foundation walls and then the material. That year has come up, they have asked for a 60-day extension, and in conjunction with the rezoning request, it's pending before the planning commission, the planning commission meeting that it was on, it was postponed, pending resolution of these things. This is their request to solve the building material issue, that they can find a place to store it offsite, if we can give them 60 days to make that happen. And the other issues have otherwise been resolved to replant those trees in the fall at a better time to plant, and that would be everything. In fact, that, their application for rezoning is on the planning commission agenda for Thursday night, now that these things are taken care of, if it pleases the board.
Questions or comments?
Are there any penalties that takes longer than 60 days?
No, it, we are holding funds to do it ourselves, and, and in granting the year that we did, they had to sign off that we could just enter into the property and remove and dispose of it, with the funds that they have on deposit with us. So, that's it, get it done, or we do it with their funds.
Well, I was at the planning commission when we postponed the zoning, and you're correct, one of the issues that the planning commission was concerned about is this, they're seeking some sort of relief, you know, seeking, you know, a change in their zoning, when they haven't really complied with what they agreed to comply with. Troubles me on this is, is that, I think that was almost a month ago, the planning commission hasn't met over a month almost. I mean, we, we didn't have an early meeting this month, or at the end of last month, and so it's been almost a month. And now they're wanting 60 more days to take care of something that should have taken a year. I'm struggling with the fact that 60 days is a little bit, is pushing it in my mind, when they had, they knew exactly where the planning commission was coming. I guess if I were them, the very next day I'd be on the phone trying to figure out what we're going to do. And if they had something come, came, come to us, showing us like, okay, we, the only place we can take this, it's going to take us 60 days. But I don't see any effort whatsoever on the part of this applicant, to make any effort whatsoever. It's been over a year, those, those people that live up in that area have complained about it, and I'm, I'm still very reluctant to, I'll be honest with you, I, I'm kind of shocked they're asking for 60 days. If it was like 30 days, I'd say, okay, I, I, you know, but I'm, I can't support this. I can amend it to 30 days, I'd be, I'd be willing to do that, but they've had over a year. They could have planted those trees as well in the spring, so they would have had at least part of the year to grow, and we had a wet spring. I don't know, what do you think? Is it better to plant trees in the fall, but why couldn't they do that last fall?
I think when this, when this project came to a halt, I know, we talked about it at the board level, that we were going to give them like a year to come up with a solution. And that year, has it expired, James?
It has, at this point, it has expired.
It had expired. I don't know if we put any caveats in there that what happens at, at that point. I don't disagree that they should have been prepared ahead of time. But we, but there was, we, we didn't say you had to move it, it was, I think it was acceptable the way it was.
No, there's still-
No, no, I'm talking about for that first year.
For the first year, yeah.
For the first year. I don't know when the, when the timing ran out on that.
June 7th.
It was June 7th.
Yeah.
I think it was in the next day after-
Close to that, yeah.
-a planning commission meeting a month ago, looking for a solution.
Well, why don't, why don't we do it this way? Until it's done, you, you don't act on the rezoning.
The, I can, I'm not here to defend the developer. Internally, we've had our own questions and concerns. I think those are all solid points, including the fact that the property doesn't seem to be advertised, marketed, listed. And I will say that, you know, the rezoning request did come as a response to our behest leading up to the deadline, to say, what's your plan? I think that they, that their intent, one of their reasons for applying for the rezoning was to demonstrate due diligence and to find a solution for that building material. Whether or not you deem that appropriate, that, that's certainly your, your privilege. I think the, the tree issue, the tree issue was new to us as of that planning commission meeting. We had not received any complaints from the neighbors to know about it, and I can't say whether the property owner knew that those trees didn't die. The trees died because they were planted last June, and so we've, we've, you know, within reason have said to them, you know, don't go replant them now, let's wait until fall when it's appropriate to plant them. So I don't, there are some reasons, as I understand them, for where we're at today. I'm not here to say that those are good reasons, those are my understanding. You would be perfectly in your right, and certainly as of June 7th, it would have been our intent to go in and remove this steel, per the original terms of, of what they were given. But for this request that came in, and we wanted to demonstrate good faith to bring that request to you before we took action, so it's up to you how long you want to give them.
Have we looked at the property for any other things that we, I mean, we didn't know, we didn't notice the dead trees? Are there washout areas or anything like that?
That, yeah, there have been some concerns reported at that planning commission meeting about some bare spots. The Soil and Sedimentation Control Office of the county, they're satisfied that there's sufficient vegetation rooted there, so, and, and we've deferred to them on those erosion issues, and they're satisfied, so I think we're okay there.
And the 60-day extension goes from the termination, the year date, or from now?
Yes, it would be retroactive back to that June 7th day.
We're only talking 45 days right now.
Yeah. I think you're perfectly within reason, and you're right as policymakers to say it's less than 60, or it's nothing, that's your privilege, so.
I mean, as planning commission, do you get the feeling that they were just kind of asking for 60 days because they thought they'd get the rezoning and they have somebody?
You know, they, what they're planning on doing is, is, is they were going to zone it and build the building and then sell. That's what's my understanding, was or market it while they were building it. Basically taking the structure that, that was part of the Turner 2, and instead of having an indoor athletic facility, it would be more like a warehouse type project, and that's what they were coming back for. That way they could utilize the steel, wouldn't have to move it, they could get, you know, they have the foundation, and what I'm struggling with is the, the timing of it. I mean, it's just like, you give somebody a year, I'm wondering if a year, we should have done something more, maybe this is what we need to change, but when someone, I'm thinking a year is unrealist, is too, too, too long a period of time, because people sort of, well, I'll wait till the last minute, and that's, that's what it seems like here, is they kind of waited till the last minute to demonstrate to the board that they're, they're going to do something. And I like this developer, by the way, I like the building they were proposing to build, I like what they originally planned there. I, I think it would have been one of the nicest facilities we've ever had in the township. I was very impressed with their, what they planned on doing, very surprised with what transpired afterwards. And that, that always leaves planning commissioners, like myself, with like scratching their head, well, all that good faith and all that good, goodwill that you developed, it just kind of, it, it sours the, the attitude towards the app.
And I think everybody would, given where we're at, all things considered, that steel is custom for that open span building, it's very, it's not cheap to do what they were planning to do there. I think us and the applicant would hate to see that go to waste, within reason. You obviously can't expect to leave that as a scrapyard for years and years. So, it is my understanding that they are putting together a proposal to go ahead and build that building out as a spec building, so it can be marketed, that they would be asking for the rezoning to the light industrial, so that it could be marketed for that reason. They have not, do not have those plans to us, I don't know when it would be, but that would also likely take some time to work through the process while the steel's still sitting there.
Yeah, that would be my concern, is that, we give them another 45 days, and then they've got a plan that's going to start in another 45 days, and they're going to ask to, you know, why move the steel if we're just going to use it? I mean, can it get extended for another couple of months after that? And it's about a year, it's going to go another half a year.
No, I think you're right, I think it's-
Not what the residents want.
Well, and that's where you can, you have the ability to tie conditions to this. If you want to give them 60 days or less, and you give them a deadline by which a site plan application, a complete site plan application for building out that building is in our hands, that could be a triggering, a condition, to demonstrate good, and then if you want to give further condition to say that that, that that needs to be start construction within so many days after site plan approval. Those are options to-
So, this is on your agenda, Joe, for Thursday?
Yeah.
If we were to accept this proposal that's in front of us tonight, it goes, it started at June 7th, correct?
Yes.
So it basically gives them till just past the 1st of August? And could the planning commission put some caveats on this after they do the rezoning?
Well, rezoning will come to you too, after it goes through the planning commission, so you would have another bite at the apple on tying conditions to it, if you like.
Are they, are they doing this concurrently with building that building with the site plan?
They've not-
It's a two separate actions?
That would be a separate, they have not presented an application.
Yeah, they, I think they've come to the planning commission with a site plan.
No, they have not even brought that into township hall, so that's an application that's not been submitted yet. It's pure word of mouth at this point.
I'm a little concerned, it is, it is-
But can't, can the, can the planning commission put things on that are standard that still have to come back to the board for it to be?
Well, for the rezoning, you can't tie, rezoning is either yes or no, you can't-
And has this already been publicized, that published the rezoning? Do they have to be published in the paper?
So, there was a public hearing, that's what the, the planning commission already held on-
You already had the public hearing?
Yeah, and we tabled the decision.
Okay.
So you don't have to do that again.
Okay.
We don't have to have it on a meeting, it's just tabled.
I see the issue at, I see your issue, it's, it's two separate parts.
So if the, if the planning commission takes action on Thursday, it'll most likely be on your agenda on July 11th. If you like, you can give them till that time period, so that come that meeting, they, they can present their case for extending it beyond that, and have some demonstration of good faith towards one end or another.
Is that acceptable to, to you, Joe? I think that's, I think that's fair, and let them, I think we should contact them, let them know that on the 11th. So they, they would come back with an action plan, and then that's the night they, that we would be, assuming it goes through the planning commission.
What if the planning commission punts again, or?
Yeah, there's a risk of that.
Denies the-
They'd still have to then come to the July 11th meeting with a proposal, an action plan on how to mitigate this issue and their future plan, with or without the rezoning, or?
I don't know, maybe I'm too close-minded, but it seems like we ought to just hold them to their original requirements. They have to haul it three miles offsite somewhere else and start over, I mean, that way we're not tied to any zoning changes or future plans that would have to be brought to us or anything like that.
And to, I should have mentioned this before, it, it's been talked about before, we had discussed in admin committee at one point. We knew that the deadline was looming. One of the ideas that was put on the table, thinking that they may not meet the deadline, was because of the number of complaints we've gotten about it, is to them, for them to possibly exercise an option to move the steel back onto the property in an area that's better screened, so at least it's not a blight for a, for a short defined period of time, to, to get through this, these steps that we're talking about. We offered that as something that they could propose, we obviously couldn't guarantee that would be acceptable to you, but they, they chose not to. They've chosen this 60-day request so that they can actually remove the material and store it somewhere else, so.
If they're going to simply remove and store that, I don't know if they need to have 60 days. What's their reasoning for it?
I guess the logistics of lining up, I don't know. That's, I can't speak for them on that.
And that's what, if that's what they're challenging, that's what they're going to do, is just-
Yeah, but it goes back to what you were saying earlier, they had all this time before, if that's what their game plan was, why didn't they-
Right.
-put all their ducks in a row before?
Well, I think they were surprised, they thought they could just leave it there, and then the year came up, they could come in and get it. I don't think they quite realized that there were numerous complaints about, from the neighbors up there, so.
It would should be, it would not be a secret, because what, we saw this coming, and the conversation Troy and I had in the months leading up to this is, be very clear with them, that, that the deadline that's been given is a deadline that's expected, and that we do. I've, I've personally taken a number of complaints on a regular basis about it, and so does, I'm sure you do, and the rest of staff. So we knew this was a sensitive issue, we let them know that, they responded with this request.
I'm not comfortable adopting the, the resolution as proposed, or motion as proposed. I'd be willing to give them-
I would give them till our next meeting, which is July 11th.
I'd give them till July 11th, and then-
Because that's the, that's the, you know, coming in for the zoning request, if they don't have it done.
Or regardless of whether you have a rezoning at, on the agenda, they could, that's the deadline, they've got to give you a, a more acceptable action plan.
If, if we were to just say, no, extension, and we use the money in the, that they, that we have escrowed to get it moved, how quickly could we get somebody to, to move it?
But I wouldn't know the answer to that, but maybe Bob knows.
A week? Yeah, we had to investigate, in order to know how much money to hold, we'd investigated what it would take to do that, so.
Well, if it only will take a week-
Yeah, then I don't-
Then I'm not so sure 60 days is necessary.
Their, their letter states that they are, as they, they're asking for the 60 days, as we start the preparations to line up rigging equipment to move it, and allow us to make plans on how to and where to move the material.
Now, I think, I think that we could give them a shorter period of time, and, because I, I want to work with people, at the same time I want it to get it done, and I want them to just walk away, and we, you know, end up having to spend the money and still not get what we want done there, which is, but if, if it only takes a couple of weeks, what was the other issue? Maybe bringing a more definitive site plan, so we get to see-
An action plan on how to mitigate this in conjunction, or, or to demonstrate their effort to bring us a site plan to build it, and to follow through on that in a reasonable amount of time.
I think that, that, that should be part of this whole discussion.
Well, why don't we do right, if we were to propose July 11th here, you have a meeting with them on Thursday, and say there's an expectation by that July 11th meeting that you have this figured out.
And we will work with them to carry the water on these issues, and to help guide to make sure that they come up with a plan that's going to win your support, including the details of maybe some milestone dates, of a site plan application by this, you know, their best effort to get to continue through site plan, construction by-
Well, can we put that in here? I say we.
What I'm proposing is not necessarily to wordsmith that today, if you were to grant the extension till July 11th, that's, that'll be the drop dead date, unless they bring something more to you that wordsmiths out those details.
We, we would be moving this stuff ourselves after July 11th meeting.
Yes, July 12th. Unless, unless on July 11th, they've convinced you otherwise.
What did you say about?
That the extension would be until July 11th, which is our next meeting date.
Which is three weeks from today.
If they don't have it resolved by then to, like James says, or if they don't have a move by then, that we move it at our, at the expense through their escrow, and we take care of it.
Because our interest is for the good of the community, not necessarily the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
I can agree with that.
And then we would mention that to them?
Absolutely.
At Thursday's meeting, that this is, just so you know?
We'll let them know tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, you'll let them know tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
Call the question.
We could motion to that effect.
Yeah, call the question, so we understand what the motion is.
If I may, I think what I'm hearing is a motion to approve, a motion to grant an extension for the building materials to be removed until July 11th, maintaining all previous conditions, or the township shall remove the materials from the site and use the existing escrow account for such expenses incurred.
Just one question for timing.
Yeah.
Our meeting is the 11th.
Right.
So if they're going to convince us on the 11th, they would tell them they have to have it gone by the 11th, that doesn't work. I think it means, it means to be the 12th, just to be technical.
Yes.
Okay, should we modify that to the 12th?
To your motion, whoever makes it.
Yeah, that's, nobody's made a motion.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, a motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Colaini?
Yeah, I'll support it.
All right.
And I have, I'm the guy that has to-
All right, I'll, I'll speak. A motion to approve the Turner II extension for removal of building material until July 12th, 2017, period.
Subject to.
And then all the rest of that motion that's in the memo.
Okay, I, I understand that, but it goes back to timing. If we tell them on July 11th that that's it, or, I mean.
No, they're going to be notified tomorrow.
Of this motion?
James is going to be notifying them tomorrow that you have until the day after that meeting to have something that's acceptable to the township.
The decision being made on that motion is July 12th is the date. That's it. End of story. Now, we've, we can indicate to them that you might be open to hear a, a plan by which to extend that, a very well-thought-out plan to extend that. But absent that, and then you've been getting your approval of it, July 12th is the date.
Okay. You ready? Any other discussion?
I will vote for this motion, but I think that we might just be punting. I think we probably should have taken a more stringent point of view right now, just to get it taken care of, and then let them work on their own timetable and do the rest of the stuff. This shows we're trying to be cooperative and.
I kind of lead that way, then. It's just, if they can come up with a plan and put their building up and make it a spec building, that would be fine. That would be great. If they can't, if they can't afford it, can't do it, then get rid of it.
Any other discussion? Being none of those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, item 7C is Water Treatment Filter Design Engineering Proposal. Mr. West, good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to make a motion to approve the HRC proposal for water treatment filtration design engineering for $48,000.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Jermaine, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion?
We previously discussed this, and I think Bob West doesn't need to repeat himself.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
You know, I, I think a comment about how successful this has been, you know, with the new treatment, that that would be good for the public to understand that it's doing well, and probably better than expectations. So I think it'd be a good idea to comment for the public, I mean, we don't.
Absolutely. I won't repeat myself. Thank you. But I do have great news. Our pilot study results have basically come back very positive, and they will conservatively double the existing capacity within the existing filter vessels. So the footprint of the water treatment plant does not have to expand whatsoever. We will modify the internal components of the existing filter vessel housings. And although the results have not been officially delivered in a report form, DQ has approved the process. All they are waiting for is our request to increase the firm capacity, which we are conservatively going to ask for six gallons per cubic foot, which will essentially double our treatment plant's firm capacity. So that is a substantial increase. In addition, those filter vessels will be limited by the existing piping str, infrastructure within the plant, which can be upgraded at a later date, still using the existing two filters to an even higher firm capacity. So all the way around, this is a very cost-efficient method by not having a whole lot of new infrastructure, as well as substantially favorable results. And I'm just very happy to report that, so.
Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good work.
I'll entertain a motion for the Water Treatment Filter Design Engineering Proposal. You already did. Any other discussion? That's right, you asked them to explain and not repeat. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item number eight, which is Board Reports. We are in our second meeting in June. We start with Clerk Shofu.
No report.
Trustee Quinney?
The Kiro Annual Golf Oding, Nine Hole Golf Oding at the Majestic at Lake Walden is scheduled for July 16th. TF is at 1 o'clock, I believe. Is that correct?
I think it's 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock. And we're always looking for sponsors. We have hole sponsors that can sponsor the different holes and other things that you can sponsor and/or donate in addition to bringing it for some. And second other, one other item I wanted to just indicate and appreciate the, the staff, but importantly, the supervisor's role this past week. It's been a tough week for the supervisor and a number of other folks who have helped out in looking at this whole issue regarding the Imagine Theater. And it's disappointing that the Township Board, it was a close vote, five to four, and it was very disappointing that our two representatives from Heartland, who do not live in Heartland, both voted against designating a district, a commercial rehabilitation district, something that will allow us to provide, go forward with a proposed tax abatement. And for all the public that didn't get a chance to see that, what transpired over the last week, it's a shame because of the lack of transparency that took place both at the committee level and then subsequently in the finance level. I've never seen a bigger travesty in the way government is run by a few folks at, at the county. Last night, I was appreciative of the chairperson, Kate Lawrence, and a few others who did include this on the agenda and allow for the public to come in and participate. And it was a unbelievable show of support that we had from our business community, our industrial businesses, our residents, and the vast majority who spoke out against it did not, do not even live in Heartland. Vast, almost everyone that spoke who were opposed to our commercial rehabilitation district were not even from the township. And that is just the most, the biggest travesty I, I saw was two of our board members, county commissioners, who, you know, there's a reason why ideology starts with ID, because it also means a bunch of, I have another word for it, but I'm just so disappointed in our, our county. And I'm hoping that we may be able to change that, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to change that. But I think the voters need to know that county commissioners come up to vote every two years, and it's about time that we start looking for someone who's going to represent our township, not represent their own personal interests and ideological interests, because we have lost the opportunity to create jobs in this, our community, jobs for our youth, a place to, for our youth to enjoy possibly. And we've lost the, all the other kinds of possible development that could come about as a result of this project. And I'm just absolutely dismayed by our county commission. And it is a majority. It was, or wasn't the, there was a number of the, of the county board members who were very supportive, and I appreciate their, their comments and their wisdom. Unfortunately, it did not sway. Mr. Parker, who just three months ago, three and a half months ago, put forth a similar proposal that gives, will grant tax payment to 45 or 49.5 acres of property in his district, which the, which the board routinely, routinely rubber stamps. So the rules have been changed. They were changed for Heartland, and I find it really troubling. Sorry, I have to just go on the record and say that.
Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
Well, I echo what Joe just said. My comment would be is that what's good for Heartland Township is good for Livingston County. And it's unfortunate that the majority of the commissioners can't get beyond the fact that we were only asking for the use of a tool, but they really attacked was the proposed business. And they, they were really two separate issues, and that's where I think they got hung up, and they were not looking out for the interest of the county as a whole. The other thing I would like to say is that I know we're not Lion Township, but they have recently started their, a magazine that their township's producing in conjunction with the City of South Lion. And it's really a high-class document. If you look through it, I'm going to leave it with James, and I'd like to have the other administrative people look at it. I'm not saying that this is what Heartland Township should do, but it's another idea, another thought that, that we need to throw around. And with that, I would like to ask that we add to our information and discussion sections for a future meeting, not this evening, future meeting, a discussion on how the communication's going with the school district and the Chamber of Commerce and our branding efforts. We haven't really discussed that recently, and I think that that would be something good that we spend a few minutes as a board getting an update, seeing what's proposed and planned for the future. That's all this evening. Mr. Supervisor?
Thank you. Trustee Harper?
I would just like to say that I support what Joe and Matt had just said about the county and the issues that we have with the county. Hopefully, in the future, that we find a way to, that they find a way to work with us as opposed to what they did with us last night.
And just to, just to, I like concur with the comments that have been said. The magnitude and the importance of this, this particular development, for those that are watching this evening, the amount of time that we spent as a board looking at this and the pros and the cons was probably one of the most well-thought-out and well-laid-out plans. James did a really nice job with the, trying to boil kind of a difficult topic down into five minutes. And I think he did a good job with that. And as we go forward, we'll, we'll learn from this, and, and hopefully we can play good in the sandbox together, as some people have said, as we go forward. We all live in the same community, and we all drive the same roads and go to the schools and the restaurants together. So it was a long, long day yesterday, that's for sure. So. That's all I have. If there's nothing else this evening for this portion, we will have a short recess and go into our work session.